Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Welcome to Planning and Zoning. If we could please have roll call.
Ryan.
Here.
Sam Filippo.
Here.
Mccarty.
Here.
Carstensen.
Here.
Madigan.
Here.
Turner.
Jaffrey.
Penning.
Here. Announcements and correspondence, Mr. Garrigan?
There are no announcements.
Okay, we move on to approval of the June 27, 2023 Planning and Zoning Board Special Meeting Minutes as presented.
So move.
Second.
Ryan.
Epstein.
Sam Filippo.
Epstein.
Mccarty.
Yes.
Carstensen.
Yes.
Madigan.
Yes.
Penny.
Yes. All right, then we go to public comments. Mr. Thomas from the law firm, do I have to?
You don't.
Follow that? Okay, thank you. He'd like to make a statement before we start.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Thomas. I'm with Addison Denalfo. I'm going to stop there because it changes almost every month. Mr. Vasselli had a conflict, asked if I would come in and sit on this meeting this evening. After reviewing your agenda packet, I just wanted both members of the commission and the general public to be aware that the Antioch Fire Protection District has two matters on the agenda requesting relief. Our firm also represents the Fire Protection District, but for this evening, no other members of our firm are here on their behalf. I'm sitting here tonight only with one hat, and that is to, in the capacity of village attorney, and to counsel the Planning and Zoning Board. So if anybody has any questions associated with that, I'll be happy to answer.
Any of the commissioners?
Thank you for the opportunity to let everybody know that.
Okay, thank you. All right, we move on to public comments. Any public comments? Nope, okay. Old business, Mr. Garrigan?
Yes, relating to actually new cases, Madam Chairperson. The first case let the public record be reflected that this is a public hearing in her pursuit to public notice in accordance with all state statutes applicable ordinances. Madam Chairperson, this case comes before you this evening for a variance in site plan for the properly commonly known as 700 Deep Lake Road. As you well know, the applicant, the Antioch Fire Protection District, is coming before you this evening and asking for a variance in the site plan review. As you recall, a year ago, a year and a half ago, the applicant did go through a referendum and pursuant to their request, they are in process of making some long overdue improvements to their sites. So the first matter that comes before you this evening, again for record, is a site plan and a variance. Whenever we look at a variance, we also want to look at the context of the property. So you can see behind my back, the property is located on Deep Lake Road. To the south is the existing Antioch Elementary School. The area to the north is basically larger state lots. The area to the, to east of the property, again, is in the state area, which is annexed in the village of Antioch. But you can see generally the area semi-rural. The fire station was built there a number of years ago. So what the applicant is requesting this evening is coming in for a variance. The basis for the variance is twofold, but the major variance is what they're proposing is to have an opportunity to store materials. There is a shortage or of the current capacity for storage of their emergency equipment. And therefore, they're requesting the opportunity to construct the 2,400 square foot pre-engineered metal building. As you well know, the village, with the exception of the state districts or ag districts, we do not allow metal structures, well, metal sheeting structures in the Antioch. As at one time, that were, they are quite common and reflected a more rural pattern development. Since we adopted the Site Plan Review ordinance in 2016, we prohibit these buildings. The applicant is seeking relief from that prohibition. So the first basis of their variance is, again, ask for relief from the village's prohibition of pre-engineered metal buildings. A second aspect is they are slightly over the 40% impervious area for R1. This is in R1 zoning classification. They're asking for relief. They're approximately at 42%, 43%, so they're asking for slight relief. Also ask for, asking for slight relief from the height limitations, which is 15 feet for garages or sheds. Somewhere a gray area, what we, what we identify this structure is, is clearly being used for storage. Whether it's a garage, I mean, it comes close to, I guess, a garage or accessory structure, but nevertheless, they are asking for relief for the height aspects. So whatever any variance, you look at certain findings of facts, I'm going to very briefly go through these findings of facts that demonstrate the applicant's findings. The first finding is the variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. Again, this area, I've already identified the context. It's semi-rural. It's rural estate lots. There is a single strike that there is a school, elementary school to the south, but the general area character of it is semi-rural. The actual proposal of a 2,400 square foot metal structure will have no impact, negative impact, or in any way be detrimental on the adjacent properties, which again is our semi-rural and estate in character. We would also submit the applicant proposal will have minimum impact with regards to any potential trend of development. So the area is, there's an opportunity for future redevelopment of this area. There's nothing to indicate that this proposed building would have any type of negative impact or be detrimental or would in any way inhibit future developers from developing adjacent areas. And I'll get into the details. Maybe actually, we actually look at the site plan, which I'm going to actually refer to right now. You can see the general location of this metal building is behind, again, for the record, it's behind, locate behind the main fire station. So it won't even be visible from Deep Lake Road, and there is sufficient buffering and landscaping on the site itself to mitigate any type of potential impact on the properties to the north. So if in fact the properties to the north or west would be developed somewhere in the future, annexed and developed, there is enough buffering, there's enough mitigation to have any type of prohib, make sure there's no negative impact on the potential land use or future development opportunities to the properties to the north. Again, staff would be more concerned about the properties to the north if this site would not be visible from the areas to the east and/or the visit or visible from the elementary school. Second finding fact is the plight of the owner is due, is unique circumstances, and thus the strict enforcement and zoning ordinance would result in practical difficulties or impose exceptional hardships due to special and unusual conditions. Again, this is also finding that's invariably very challenged for any applicant to meet. There is by, by its face, there is no undue hardship. There's no inherent uniqueness about this property, I mean theoretically, in the absence that the owner, the Fire Protection District, could build a masonry building or some other type of structure. There's nothing that's uniquely, unique about this request, or there's no inherent hardship. The third finding of fact is that property cannot yield a reasonable use of permitted only under the conditions allowed. Again, the basis for this is to provide a more economical answer to providing a necessity of providing additional storage to the Antioch Fire Protection District. Got for economical fiscal responsibilities, the applicant is asking for relief. Clearly, this is an accessory structure. It's clearly a secondary structure. So in lieu of building a brick building or a building that's all fiber cement board, which directly what our ordinance would require, the applicant is asking for relief, i.e. variance, to allow them to construct this metal pre-engineered building. Now, they are trying to, as I'll go through my site plan review, and I actually review the architecture, talk a little bit about the site plan, they are trying to make some mitigating improvements to try to minimize any negative impact on any properties. Because I guess, again, we don't allow metal buildings. So I'll kind of get into the architectural details of the building itself. But again, there's nothing to indicate that the applicant would have any type of negative impact on surrounding properties. Number four, and finally, the variance of granite will not alter the essential character of the locality and will not be a substantial detriment. I've already covered this. Clearly, there's nothing to indicate that there would be depreciation of property values would be a negative impact on surrounding property values. It would be nothing to indicate that surrounding property values, properties could not develop somewhere in the future as a result of this proposed building. It's only a 2,400 square foot accessory structure, so any type of impact would be minimal, if any impact at all. So therefore, based on our findings, Madam Chairperson, we believe that applicant has met the required findings of facts required for a variance. Now directing your attention to the site plan review. Since this is a new building, we do require a site plan review of the structure itself. As you can see behind me, the applicant's proposed access point on Deep Lake Road is all remaining the same. The general site layout is 100, is basically remaining the same. So the existing parking lot in front of the fire station, the access drives to emergency garage doors or emergency bay doors are all remaining the same. The only real change to this site plan is the construction of a 2,400 square foot building. Again, you can see where it's located, right behind the fire station. There is some additional access, so this building will have access to parking. There is really, there will be no additional parking that's required. This is merely being used for storage. So based on that fact, no additional parking would be required. There's no additional staffing as a result or as a consequence of this proposed use. Directing your attention to the architecture. This picture actually shows on the actual main fire station, station number two. You can see the architectural design of that. Now, if you actually look at to the left of that, you'll see the proposed front elevation of this new 2,400 square foot storage building. You can see the applicant has made some architectural attempts to generally make this less of an agricultural character, more of an attractive building. Specifically, they have incorporate bay doors, which reflect the general designs, the existing main fire station. They've incorporate red doors, which provides an additional color. More importantly, they've provided a Wayne Scott or a bulkhead of CMU block, which provides some additional architectural articulation and movement to the building. So it's certainly not just an agricultural metal building, but the applicant has made a good base effort architecturally to incorporate some additional architectural elements, which will blend in with the existing building. So again, the building would not be visible from Deep Lake Road, but you can see through architecture here, the applicant has made efforts through their architecture to incorporate and to basically have a unified design with their overall fire station campus. Again, this gives you another elevation, the other side of the elevations of this actual proposed storage facility. You see that actually there's a metal roof. There's actually a sheet, metal sheeting, but there's a Wayne Scott CMU block with the two bay doors. There's also additional, additional access, additional door on the western elevation. The applicant has submitted a actual landscape plan. There will be some additional landscaping. Several new shade trees will be planted on this, on this overall site plan. Addition, some additional shrubs and landscaping will be incorporated on the southern perimeter of existing, existing fire station. Regards to actual photo metrics, a photo metric plan, it's been submitted. There's really no major, major change to the photo metrics. And trash enclosure itself is not being changed. There's existing trash enclosure, which will remain the same on this subject site. So with that, with respect to stormwater, again, there's really no additional stormwater requirements. The site has existing stormwater, and it's being served by existing detention pond. This additional 2,400 square feet will have no impact. But obviously, the final engineering will be reviewed by the village engineer prior to building permit. So with that, Madam Chairperson, we are making recommendation, we're making favorable recommendation of the proposed variance to allow for the metal building and also allow for 15 feet variance for the height of the building and also relief from the village's impervious surface requirements with the two enumerated stipulations as outlined in my staff report. In addition, we're making favorable recommendations this evening for a site plan review with our two standard stipulations. So with that, I'll conclude my staff report. Be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Garrigan. Mr. Ryan?
Yes, a couple of questions. Can you go back to the site plan, please? Okay, so.
For the record, the applicant's actually here and their architect's here, so it might be appropriate also to have them answer any questions you have.
Okay, I just want to understand the configuration of where the doors are facing for access in and out of the building, their main access. That's on the, that view right now that we're looking at is, is facing.
South.
So I mean, I can't see the north or on that drawing right now to see which way, north.
North is to the south.
Okay, can you, let me swear in before you give any, do you swear to give honest testimony to the, in this hearing this evening?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm the architect.
Okay. Okay.
This is the facility in this location behind the station.
Yep.
And the two overhead doors are on the south face of the building.
Okay, on both faces, okay. Okay, is this building being insulated for heat?
It is going to be a warm source, not a cold source building, but a warm source. So it would have, it would have temperamental heat to keep it not from freezing, and it would have a dry fire protection system.
Okay, and what's the interior walls?
Interior walls are the finished, finished aspect. So again, you have the proposed vertical structure and the vinyl coating insulation system. Eventually, if the intent does its storage, would have plywood on the wall that would be utilized for the storage.
Excuse me, sir. Could you come up to the podium and speak into the microphone, please? It's okay.
Yes, so ultimately, it would be, it would be insulation with vinyl wrap on the inside, and eventually, it would have the plywood on the inside that would allow the fire district to utilize it to its capacity for storage.
Okay, and what do they anticipate storing in there?
So this is a domino effect, unfortunately, where station one is being done at the same time. You're going to see that next in the next item. But there is stuff, there are, there are equipment and such stored within station one that needs to vacate so that we can build out station one for living quarters and operations.
Okay.
So it is equipments, vehicles, auxiliary reserve equipment.
Okay, let's look at, let's not look at the next year. Let's look at three years down the road. What's anticipated storage in there three years down the road? Since by that time, there, number one will be done. I would assume that equipment's coming back into there. What is the long-term intended purpose of the building?
Station one, it would not be going back in there. We're actually commandeering that space for living quarters.
Okay.
So it would not be going back there. But in terms of what the long-term storage is, I'm going to, I'm going to let the chief speak up.
Okay.
And chief, you'll need to be sworn in.
Chief, you promised to tell the truth on your end this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing our case. What we're looking at putting in there is off-season boats. We have airboat that we have to store in the winter. Or I'm sorry, in the summer, and two watercraft boats that we store in the winter. We also have a 1932 Stoughton and a 1923 Stoughton that were original equipment of the fire district that we're looking to place in there. When you look at future uses for new fire equipment, that's not our intent at all. This is taking up all the space, so our new equipment can sit within the stations that we have now.
Okay, I, you know, okay. No more questions?
All right, thank you. Ms. Sam Filippo?
I'm assuming that the relief you're seeking on the roof height is for the trucks, the equipment that's stored in there?
Yeah, so the airboat tends to sit a little higher.
Right.
If we had to store a piece of apparatus or work on a piece of apparatus, the bigger equipment is what we're looking for, the 12-foot doors, and it brings the ceiling up to that.
Okay, and then I think the only other question I had was like on landscaping. I know that they're proposing to put in some additional, right, buffering, and that's going in the front or?
So I think as it's.
And also this, I see there's some existing landscaping too. That's going to remain, correct?
This year?
Yeah.
Landscaping, thought of this whole landscape, and here is one, one landscaping that was taken out. This side, we're looking for new landscaping, it's on a disportment building. Right now, this, this structure here has no people, it's just a piece of grass.
Okay.
All that.
Okay.
Rest of them, you know, I mean, that's the right, I'm going to take care of a lot of our issues.
We have a $10 million project for three stations that we're trying to get done, and we're doing all three at the same time, trying to get the most bang for our buck. And the goal is to dress them up now and maintain them in the future with what we've been allotted by citizens.
Okay, I don't think I have anything else.
Mr. Mccarty?
Where do I start? So the village has maintained since 2016 that we should not have structures without brick from zero to eight feet should be decorative and/or to a standard of our village look. To set this back and go to a metal building is not to our, our village's set look and plan. To go to a metal panel, it's not going to specifically enhance and/or mimic what's there. I see the, the brick Wayne Scott that's, that's being proposed. That's great, CMU. But everything on the existing building is brick from there up all the way to the eaves. There is a small set of CMU above that, but it's pretty much so to the eaves.
On the north and south side, you have, this is kind of Marion.
That's the, that's the way, that's the Wayne Scott.
Yeah.
That goes to the, to the.
Have the look with less.
Of, of the Wayne Scott, I understand, but the village has had this set precedence for brick, and I've been held to the standard, not only as a citizen of this community or builder, and, and other people have been held standard, and I hate to even think of adding more cost. That's, that's sticking point number one. I don't have anything showing me where you have your downspouts coming off of this building. You're going to have some to the north, some to the south. They're not connecting to the existing water detention to the extreme west. It's surface drain to those locations. Being a fire district in a four-season community, I would probably recommend somehow connecting to those rather than leaving them surface mount so that we have frozen conditions happening for your personnel, people, and vehicles. Just a thought. Everything else is pretty basic. We've had people present to us previously, meaning school districts and others within our community, saying that they're going to do this and that, and they don't perform. So I just want to make sure if we're going to approve something, we want to have something that's going to show up that looks like we've been discussing. It has happened in the past. It's left a sour taste in a lot of our mouths when that happens, so let's at least dial this in tightly and make sure that we make it look with the best foot forward. That's all I got for now.
If I could just comment on that, we take a lot of pride in our equipment and the way our equipment looks. Our buildings are no different. We want this to be aesthetically pleasing to the public. We want it to match. Our goal is to get as close as a match as we can while minding our dollars. Because, well, $10 million seems like a lot of money. It's going out pretty quick. You know, as I'm sure you're all aware with these projects, so you know, you look for assurances. I'm not quite sure what you referred to as, you know, this and that, whether you think the use will be different. I can't promise you the next fire chief when they come in. That's not what it was.
That's not the issue. It's, it's landscaping. If you say you're going to put certain amount of landscaping somewhere, I don't have a detail showing me what you're doing. Don't have it. So we're going to prove something based on a lack of knowledge, just somebody saying, oh, we're going to provide it. We had someone else provide something previously on other, other buildings that it's not even close to what was presented.
Right.
We've also had metal panels presented previously, and I'm going on our schools that doesn't even work to the concept of what they presented to us. So.
Clear now.
This is a, this is, this is a tough pill to swallow.
As most, I think most variances are. You know, so we just ask for your consideration.
So Ms. Ms. Carstensen?
What's the height of the fire thing? I think I missed that.
Of the proposed structure or the existing?
The existing.
The existing station is somewhere around 30, 32 or 34 feet to the peak. I'm not, I'm not as clear.
It is taller.
It is much.
Okay, okay. Um, Michael, was the house that is on the north side, or were they aware of this proposal?
Public notice. Did go out with it, all the properties within 250 feet. So the applicant did send out, their attorney did send out all the notices. This is a public hearing, so.
And then, did we, Michael, this next one's for you too. You said it's all R1 around there?
Correct.
Today? Okay.
I'm sorry, some of it, I think, is also across the streets of state, just to the north, northeast is.
But all residential.
Underdeveloped, yeah. It's all residential.
Okay, um, I get the cost differentiator. What's the long-term viability of this building versus a brick? I just don't have that knowledge.
I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to defer to the architects. He guesses every day.
For a storage facility in their use and capacity and well-maintained, this will survive what they need to use for past many, probably well past the chief's term as well as into the next. I would anticipate this to be at least a 50 to 70-year solution. You know, again, with the, with the masonry Wayne Scott at the bottom, that should be able to give better capacity to things like salt and snow and ice and give you better capacity. One of the major cost items that the chief has been talking about is as an outbuilding, this allows you to not have to build this building to essential facilities standards, which is a building code requirement. So the structural capacity, had it been attached to the building, would have been considerably greater. And there's some of the cost savings when you look at this outbuilding where it's just for reserve and auxiliary equipments.
Okay, I just get concerned. I was a kid when we did the first proposal for the taxes for the fire stations, and I just, I feel like we add more people, but we're always asking for more money from the residents, and I just want to be extremely mindful how we're spending the money, which it sounds like you're trying to do. But as Mr. Mccarty said, it's just tough. My last question is, Michael, you mentioned that there was going to be additional landscaping on the south side, and as these guys have mentioned, I don't see that except for the shrubs.
Yeah, well, there is a shrub area to the existing, as John identified.
Yeah, I guess I would just advocate, as they did, for additional landscaping.
Are you looking for the, along the northern perimeter or southern perimeter?
The northern, because that's where there's additional residents. And then if there was stuff on the south, I wouldn't want to lose that addition. Because currently, I think trustee Cian Filippo mentioned this, it just says existing, and then the little shrubs. So any additional landscaping we can add, I will always try and push for that.
We can add a stipulation to have applicants, architect, work with staff and on some additional buffering on the northern perimeter. There may be some opportunities to do some evergreens or shade trees that would mitigate any, when that property to the north develops, then there will be an opportunity to provide some additional buffering.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Madigan?
I just have one question, as like fellow commissioners asked a lot of others that. Um, I, I just have one question, um, that's like fellow commissioners asked a lot of others that I have. Um, so one of the items that you mentioned is the height of the doors for equipment and if you had to work on something, you know, you needed that extra space. So I understand that, but so is the idea that only the items that would be stored in that storage uh space be worked on, or is that, is that something that's going to be used as a maintenance work area as well?
The, it's not the proposed maintenance area, but it's time to actually over the last two years, we're waiting four, five months to get a part for a fire itself. So if we move equipment around, it may move us just to set that there. A mechanic won't want to work on it. It's totally, um, so we can get them back into a warm bag or like you said, but, you know, it's made the main need above three. So it comes on three, the equipment is still useful and.
Okay, thank you.
So what I would say is, thank you. Um, because in times of emergency, um, you're there. Um, I have a son-in-law who's a firefighter and I know how hard they work and I know how they maintain their equipment and the things that they need to do, um, in times of emergency and being out here in a chain of lakes and meeting the boats. Um, so I understand the emergency and the, in, in the, um, necessity to have places to store these things. I also understand my commissioners and their, their concerns. So, um, with that, I would say, um, we need a motion. So I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Excuse me, I have some more comments.
Mr. McCarty.
Have you, uh, discussed and or, uh, talked about with the architect, uh, the insulated, uh, metal panels that can be put on this as a flat panel with a texture to the exterior to give it a better look? And also, hold, hold your insulation value and give you an interior finish for what you're going to do there for, uh, your storage. So if you're going to hose something down, it's not going to just have a vinyl sheet with insulation behind it to get wet and or degrade.
Uh, there's actually going to be no water within the facility, we're not bringing any water inside, so while I guess you could officially run a hose from the main station, it's not meant to be hosed down inside. Uh, in terms of finish, in terms of the panels on the exterior, uh, we were looking at more of a package system. Uh, in terms of the exterior skin, the, it, that could be looked at to more of a textural panel or a flat panel versus the standard rib, we were already changing a little bit from what most people consider a pole barn style to try to differentiate it as well, uh, so that it doesn't just look like a normal structure that you would see in terms of a barn.
On the plans, it says flush panel wall.
Flush panel wall on the outside.
Yes.
I think that was to differentiate that from the standard barn that you would have with your textural ribs.
Okay. So to incorporate insulation with your, with your metal panels, they have them so they uh sandwiched the insulation in between there to give you your R value than your exterior walls. Kind of kill two birds with one stone, gives you a finished side on the interior, could reduce some finish costs in the future with that.
It could, yes, absolutely, an IMP or something like that is an option, or just even a liner panel on the inside is an option as well.
Yeah. Alright. The, the, the IMPs that, that we're talking about, they're, they're the panels that have the insulation packaged in.
Yes, sir.
We can get them with more of a, uh, pebbled look that looks more like masonry.
Okay.
So, that could come closer to what we are looking for from the village for an aspect there.
It, it could be an option, yes, sir.
Would this be something we can work with, uh, staff on to see if we can accommodate? Mr. Gergen?
Yes, if you want to add, if you want to add stipulation, we can work with staff to explore different options, provide some additional textures to the metal sheeting.
Texture, not.
Texture.
Not just rolled finishes looking like an average panel, but something that gives it.
Some texture, so I can work with the architect and the fire district and see if there's options within their, um, budgetary limitations.
Alright. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Yeah, I gotta get to it. Uh, the variance for the PCB. Twenty-three.
Perhaps we should address the, the steel building.
Twenty-three-ten?
Initially.
Twenty-three-ten?
Yes.
Um, to include possible options for the panels above the Wayne Scott to look more masonry or concrete type finish.
Alright, so there's, there's two items of relief initially before you. Um, and I'm reviewing the, the staff report. Initially, um, there was, um, contemplated a motion that would recommend Google the variance for the steel engineered building. Relief from the impervious surface limit of forty percent and the height limitation of fifteen feet for the garage, uh, sheds. Uh, for the property commonly known as seven hundred Deep Lake Road, subject to stip- stipulations that would include compliance with the requirements of the village engineer, compliance with the requirements of the Antioch Fire Protection District. And then I believe, Spicardi, your inclusion, um, that the petitioner should work with staff on exploring options for additional texture on the outside finishing of the structure.
Above the Wayne Scott.
Should, should that be in a variance or should that be in the site plan review? Approval?
Probably in the site planner.
Yeah, I think so too, I think so too.
Alright, so the variance would be as you stated?
Yes.
Correct, excluding the reference to uh applicant working with the staff on exploring different options of the exterior.
So move.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Cardi?
Yes.
Yes.
Madigan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And then I th- I think, uh, a motion would be in order, uh, recommending approval of the proposed site plan for the proposed pre-engineered metal building subject to the following conditions. Compliance with the village engineer, compliance with the Antioch Fire Protection District. The applicant will work with the staff on a landscape plan to add potential additional buffering around the structure. And the applicant to work with the staff on the texture outside, um, the struc- uh, above, of the structure above the Wayne Scott.
So move.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Alright. Now we move on to PCB twenty-three eleven, right? Consideration of a site plan review for station number one located at eight thirty-five Holbeck.
Yes, and thank you, Madam Chairperson. Again, this matter comes before you this evening for a site plan review by the Fire Protection District for Station One, as you recall, Station One is located in downtown Antioch, just, uh, a short distance from here, specifically in Orchard Properties company known as eight thirty-five Holbeck. The applicant, uh, this evening, uh, is looking for a site plan review. I will kind of walk you through that, um, with regards to their actual proposed improvements to the station. This is the main station of the Antioch Fire Protection District. Uh, and the applicant is seeking some actual site plans, landscaping and some architectural modifications to their actual main station itself. Um, the actual, uh, property is zoned, uh, in our downtown, it's in our transitional core. This area is technically, uh, as part of our form-based code is, uh, within uh, future, uh, part of the downtown, it's been identified as our future area for downtown expansion. So some context should be taken into consideration of its central downtown location. Uh, but again, this is the main, the largest fire station that the district has. Um, and, uh, I'm going to walk you through some of the specific, actual proposed, uh, improvements as it relates to the site plan review. The biggest change that's being proposed this evening is additional access, new access drive, so I'm going to direct you to the actual site plan. So I'm sorry, just very briefly, just gives you context, this site is actually located right next to the, uh, Antioch Police Department. Uh, right now, there's currently a parking lot on this site, just the adjacent to the Antioch Police Department, just, um, just in front of the property itself, uh, there's an existing parking lot and access drive to the Antioch Police Station, uh, basically continuous to the fire district's property. Uh, to the north of this property is some, uh, basically a large parking lot area. Uh, and then we have some additional senior housing to the north. So this kind of gives you a pretty good context, um, generally there's very little, very little green area. This is a generally site that typical of downtown, it's largely built out, mostly impervious surface, so between the existing building, uh, the existing access drives to the emergency bays, uh, parking lot in the rear, uh, there's very, very little, uh, area that can actually be uh, constructed, uh, so there are a lot, there are a lot of limitations to the applicant's architect and the applicant to try to expand this facility. And the impervious surface is, um, obviously quite high, typical of downtown, a downtown site. What the applicant is now proposing, uh, applicant is proposing a construction, as you know, there is a limited small green area uh, on adjacent to Orchard Street, um, with the existing parking lot. The applicant is proposing to, uh, construct that access drive which would, um, provide direct access to the existing curb cut, so the applicant is not providing, not proposing any new curb cuts on Orchard Street, existing curb cut will be used. The applicant, as you can see through the site plan, is proposing a new, uh, one-way access drive and there will be some ancillary angle parking. So this, uh, new parkings, these new parking spaces will generally replace existing parking spaces that are located to the east of the subject site. As you well know, as we discussed, it goes to form-based code, this is in the form-based code. Uh, historically has tried to discourage, um, parking in front areas. Um, but there is precedent for allowing parking, obviously with the Antioch Police Department, we did allow a construction of a, a, a new parking lot. Uh, in, generally in the area that, uh, is in front of, front of the property. There, but moreover, there's precedent, there is an existing parking lot for this fire station that's actually adjacent to Orchard Street. So the applicant's really not proposing, uh, a new parking lot per se, they're simply proposing to relocate the existing parking uh, to access it, it, which we have direct access to this access drive. Uh, but more importantly, if you actually look, um, there's really no other area on the site for any type of parking expansion. The applicant currently has twenty-three spaces, they're proposing additional, um, up to twenty-nine spaces. Uh, if you look at the rear of the property, as you can see behind me, there's an existing parking lot there, so there's really no opportunities for additional parking, uh, on to the, to the, to the north of the property, so this proposed new access drive and the new angle parking, um, most importantly, it really does improve the circulation. Um, and I'll allow the, the architects and fire chief to maybe outline, uh, why that does, but basically it really removes the parking, as you know, there's the main access to the emergency base is on Orchard Street, it removes some of those parking spaces what's in front of the building and that will really minimize any potential conflict between emergency vehicles entering or exiting this building. So it does really have a positive impact on the overall circulation, it's a much cleaner circulation. Typically, staff would, uh, have some concerns about parking in front of buildings in our downtown, but in this case, because of the emergency services, because of the improvement of circulation, um, staff is generally comfortable with this realigned circulation, generally comfortable with the proposed, um, angle parking spaces as proposed. Um, so the applicant, again, as I've already identified, is going from twenty-three parking spaces to twenty-nine parking spaces over, on the overall site. I'm going to direct you, so that's the first major change, perhaps the most significant change on this proposed site plan. The second major change, architecture. You can see, um, the architecture, this shows you the floor elevations, applicant uh, in their new elevation modifications, they're proposing basically to update a new main entrance area vestibule. Um, they're actually making that a lot more, let's say, um, contemporary, a lot more updated by incorporating some metal aluminum panels. This should provide a kind of a streamlined, more prominent, prominent entrance area. I can see the actual behind me, the elevations, the elevations, the actual main entrance area has been dramatically improved with a really new prominent entrance, which will have direct access to the access drive in the new angle parking spaces in front of the fire station. Secondly, the applicant is providing, uh, extensive outdoor lighting, all the outdoor lighting wall packs are being replaced on the structure itself. The actual bay doors, if it's, um, they, all the bay doors with an instruction, as you can see, there are a fair number of them are all being replaced with new bay doors, which are more contemporary and updated, so all the bay doors on this, um, proposed fire station are also being replaced. In addition, there'll be two new, uh, windows on north facade. Um, so that kind of provides you a summary of the architectural changes, uh, that are being proposed for this structure. Um, as it relates to the elevations. Another a- aspect, as the chief, I think, has already mentioned, is one of the also major improvements uh, is new, um, living areas are being provided for the firefighters who, uh, who are located on this facility and provide a more livable, more comfortable environment. Uh, the applicant is provo- proposing an outdoor terrace, as you can see, uh, behind me, the site plan really reflects to the far north, there's this existing new patio slash terrace area. You can see the extensive landscaping, uh, the additional landscaping that's been, um, incorporated within that area, so that will be used by the firefighters who are actually located within this area to give them a more, more livability, provide a more comfortable environment, um. So that space, uh, which, which is not fully being utilized right now, will become a new outdoor terrace patio area for the firefighters. Uh, and extensive landscaping, uh, will be added to this north area to provide some additional attraction. Now, as it relates to the actual landscaping, the applicant has submitted a landscape plan, they are removing two mature, um, silver maples, uh, which, um, are fairly good size. And based on that fact, they are required to provide a, a replacement ratio, um, so you can see staff um, has identified that. On the overall plan itself, they're providing two additional maple trees, there's one new London plane tree. I won't go through specifically, but you can see the overall applicant has complied with the village's landscaping requirements. Um, we would, um, we think there's an opportunity based on our, our review, the landscape plan for two major changes. First, we think there are some opportunities to add some additional ornamental trees on a, uh, on, um, Orchard Street. In addition, uh, because there is additional access drive and new asphalt, new impervious surface areas, they're replacing that with what is now a green lawn, um, impervious area. We think there's an opportunity to provide some additional landscaping to soften the appearance from Orchard Street, as you well know. Uh, generally, the existing character of Orchard Street, uh, between this area and Hillcrest is generally unfortunately defined by a lot of parking lots for our commercial uses along Orchard Street. The new parking lot at the fire, uh, at the police station. So what staff is requesting is some additional landscaping, a hedge of some type of landscaping in addition, in addition to what's being proposed along Orchard. We think by adding additional, uh, landscaping, providing a hedge of shrubs that will soften the overall appearance and potential negative impact that any parking or access drive would have on the overall character of, uh, Orchard Street. So that is one modification that staff has requested, some additional landscaping, specifically the incorporation of a hedge and some additional ornamental trees, which provide seasonal color, uh, along Orchard Street, just to provide some additional interest. With the guys a phot- photometric plan, the applicant has submitted a phot- photometric plan. As you can see in the overall plan, all new lighting fixtures are being proposed. Um, new, not only lighting fixtures for the building, but actual lighting standards itself. Um, the actual trash enclosure, the applicant is proposing construction of a new trash enclosure. Um, which will be constructed of brick, which will mac- match the existing structure itself. You can see in the actual plan, the location of the new trash enclosure. As it relates to stormwater, nothing is really changing, the actual impervious surfaces area, there's no detention pond on this facility. The applicant would be, because they're in, located downtown, they would be exempt from the stormwater requirements, uh, obviously there's no room for a, a new detention pond, um, but obviously the village engineer will review this. Um, but at this point, no additional detention or no, no additional stormwater management is being proposed for this site. So in some substance, uh, staff is generally, um, making a favorable recommendation this evening of the site plan uh, with the three stipulations, uh, we, again, we are, we are requesting a revised landscape plan uh, based on the proposed modifications, just modifications that staff has outlined in our staff report as. based on the proposed modifications, modifications that staff has outlined in our staff report as it relates to landscaping along Orchard. And with that, I'll conclude my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Garrigan. Mr. Ryan?
No, I have no questions.
Ms. Sanfilippo?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McCarty?
And on average, at your highest point for personnel in the facility, how many parking spaces will you need?
Chief, you understand you're still under oath for purposes of this public hearing. Thank you. So on duty, we have eight personnel that are 24, 48. And then we have four personnel that work days.
So at the highest?
Sixteen.
Sixteen parking spaces?
Parking spaces.
We're 24 in, in count with two handicapped. So that leaves eight and two handicapped for public.
Three of those day positions park inside. But, you know, they park on the bay apparatus bay area, so they're not utilizing actual parking spaces.
Not sufficient. Lighting, for lighting on this, do we, have we had anything for photometrics or since we're replacing all the lights on the building?
Yeah, I believe the applicant did, applicant submitted a photometric plan. It's not in your packet. They just submitted a photometric plan, overall, I'll say, should be in your packet. There is an actual photometric plan that was submitted. So when the elevate, the actual submitals that was that, in the architectural details should be in there. I'm not sure why you didn't.
Just as long as you work with staff on that, make sure that we're within our confines to the edge of the property, we should be good. We've had a number of complaints, I know myself, from the police department's parking with the poles we've added over there.
Okay. So we're going to have.
Add to that.
Yeah, this site will have a lot more landscaping than the police station. But I am working on that, so that, that's, that story's not concluded yet.
Thank you very much. That's all I have for tonight.
Ms. Karstensen?
Just appreciate all the landscape buffer I think we needed. And I'm assuming the residents of this, near this facility knew too that we were having the public hearing, so thank you.
Ms. Madigan?
I don't have any questions.
And neither do I. So.
A motion would be in order. Approving of the site plan of Station One at 835 Hoback Drive, subject to the following stipulations. Compliance with the requirements of the village engineer, compliance with the requirements of the Antioch Fire Protection District, and submittal of a revised landscape plan incorporating the modifications highlighted by staff.
Agreed upon.
Photometrics.
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 And. We haven't presented that, so.
And agreed upon photometrics as submitted by the applicant.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Okay. Who took this second?
I did.
Ryan?
Ryan?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now we move on to Kia of Antioch. PZB 2312, consideration of a site plan review for a new auto sales and service facility for Raymond Kia of Antioch, located at the northwest corner of Illinois 173 and Brown Avenue.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairperson. Again, this matter is coming for you this evening by the applicant, Raymond Kia of Antioch. As you know, they have an existing facility on Route 173. The applicant is proposing to relocate this facility to a new Kia dealership, a new site, which is at the northwest corner of Route 173 and Brown Road. And my say Brown Road, that's kind of a misnomer. It's basically a glorified driveway. It's basically an unimproved area that services currently several private residences. It's generally just adjacent to the flowing property. But behind me, you can see the context of the area. On this proposed approximately 6.8 acre new dealership will be located as part of the Brown LLC site, was previously commonly known as the Marketplace Property. As you recall, prior to 2008's major economic downturn, there was approximately a half a million square foot, a power center that was being proposed for the marketplace. And obviously, that, that did not proceed based on the economic downturns and the changes of the retail market throughout the Chicago metropolitan area. So consequently, as you well know, this property is approximately 82 acres. The applicant will be the first component, the first phase of this large future commercial slash mixed-use development. This is probably the most premier development opportunity we have in Antioch, other than the Abbott property. This is again, a large area of 82 acres. And this, Mr. Scarpelli's first Kia, new Kia dealership would be the first phase of this large master plan development. So the overall property, currently the property is zone B2. The applicant's proposal is consistent with the B2 zoning. Specifically, direct your attention to the actual site plan. The applicant is proposing a 24,600 square foot new dealership with a large service area, service center as a part of a new Kia dealership in Antioch. The property itself is approximately 6.86 acres. This site is zoned, as I've already identified, it's commercial B2. The commercial, obviously, the village's comp plan does show this as commercial. So it's consistent with the village's zoning ordinance. It's also consistent with the village's comp plan. So specifically getting into details of this actual site plan. Obviously, I'll give you context. Going back this area, you can see the area between the flowing property is existing Brown Road, which again goes up to the north, is actually not existing right away. There's, it's a prescriptive easement. It's technically not right away. Again, it's really an unimproved roadway, again, a really, in effect, a glorified driveway. The future main access, directing your attention to the actual site plan for this new dealership will be on an approved Brown Road. Actually referring to the actual plan itself, there is a proposal to improve Brown Road to a 66-foot right-of-way, which would have dedicated, dedicated turn lanes on Route 173. So the actual main access into this development will be on Brown Road. With regards to the overall context, there's also future, it'll be future full access into the overall master plan property itself on Lincoln. So there'll be two full access points on Brown Road and Lincoln. It's not been identified, as you well know, that all has to be approved by Illinois Department of Transportation. As you know, Route 173 is under the jurisdiction of Route by IDOT. There has been a traffic study, which I will, I did forward you. That traffic study basically reviews the future additional demand, additional areas of ingress and egress along Brown Road and Lincoln, not only into this overall development, but over into the overall future marketplace property. But directing your, direct attention to this actual site plan, the applicant again is proposing the main access point on a future three-lane improved Brown Road with dedicated turn lanes. In addition, the applicant is also proposing a right-in, right-out along the western perimeter of their property, as you can see in the village's site plan itself. The traffic study, as I've already identified, has been submitted to the Illinois Department of Transportation. Staff is now in the process, along with a developer, of trying to schedule a meeting with IDOT to, to ensure that they will approve a full access at Brown Road for this overall site plan itself. I've already identified the traffic study. I won't go into any details because it's a fairly, fairly extensive traffic study. But the applicant's engineer is actually here this evening to answer any specific questions you may have as it relates to the actual traffic study. With regards to parking, as you can see in the site plan, this overall 6.6 and a half acre site, in accordance with the village's parking ordinance, the applicant would be required to incorporate one parking space for every 300 square feet of the approximately 24,600 square foot showroom and service area. That would technically would require 82 parking spaces. The applicant is actually proposing 403 parking spaces on the subject site. Obviously, most of these parking spaces will be used for inventory with this new expanded Kia dealership. So there's actually extensive areas for a large inventory for this new Kia dealership. The applicant is obviously providing a lot more area and providing a lot more opportunity to have a much larger inventory than their limited space currently has on Route 173. So with regards to the parking, the applicant has provided all the minimum requirements. In addition, they've met all the requirements for handicap parking spaces. Directing your actual direction, your attention to the architecture. The applicant is actually providing, again, with regards to this new 24,000 square foot building. As you know, our village's site plan review ordinance requires that buildings be constructed of quality materials, which may include glass, may include basically metallic materials, brick, stone. The applicant is really proposing a very contemporary, modern design, which is based on the Kia template, the Kia prototypical design. You can see this overall proposed elevation is an extensive area of glass, metal, aluminum panels, which provides a very modern streamlined appearance, consistent with the Kia design. I can see within itself, there's also a fairly extensive amount of areas of EFIS. But more importantly, this building has extensive two stories. There's actually a large parapet, which provides real height to this building itself. This building will be prominently located around 173. Now it will have a much more prominent position, a much more prominent visibility compared to the existing Kia dealership on 173. So this is actually a very modern, contemporary building, which really kind of reflects the current standards for a new dealership itself. The village's proposed architecture does comply with the village's site plan review. It has extensive incorporation of glazing and glass, a lot of glass, which provides a lot of visibility of the actual inventory of this new dealership itself. Again, there's a fair, there's extensive use of steel or, I'm sorry, aluminum panels, which again provides a very modern streamlined appearance, which is a very high-quality material. So the overall architectural elevation itself is consistent with the village's site plan review ordinance. As it relates to colors, there is actually a color illustration of the actual colors, as you can see behind me, which reflects again, a kind of earth tone gray and black, which provides a very, again, contemporary streamlined appearance of this overall new dealership. So this will be a very highly visible building and will be a kind of a new commercial gateway into the Brown LLC master plan development itself. With respect to landscaping, this is a large six-point, approximately six and a half acre site. As you well know, our landscape ordinance is fair, has requires fairly extensive landscaping. Now, when you, whenever we talk about landscaping, obviously, we also, we have to be very conscious or aware that obviously, when you're dealing with a dealership, visibility is critically important. And Mr. Scarpelli can outline how critically important that visibility of the inventory, i.e. automobiles, how important that is to any, to a success of a dealership. So it's really balancing the commercial needs with also the aesthetic needs as it relates to landscaping. So the applicant's landscape plan, they are, unlike some of the existing dealerships we have in town, the applicant is proposing to have a fairly extensive amount of landscaping along 173. You can see the actual number of plants, trees and shrubs. I won't get into a lot of detail. I think the biggest variation is with regards to our ordinance, we do require one landscape island for every 12 parking spaces. In view of the case, there's over 400 parking spaces here, the applicant is seeking relief. And I think staff is generally comfortable with providing relief with regards to the number of landscape islands. So staff would have opportunity to basically work with the applicant's landscape architect to provide some relief with regards to the actual amount of interior landscaping. We think there's an importance to have some landscaping islands, maybe at the end caps to provide some additional buffering. But we are willing to work with the applicant's architect and landscape architect to provide them some relief from the amount of landscaping that's being proposed on this, on this actual landscape plan. But you can see there's extensive landscaping along 173. Again, we want to make sure that there's visibility of inventory. So we'll continue to work with the applicant's landscape architect to refine this plan to make sure that there is, there is a basically a high quality of landscaping, but also basically clear view sheds of the, not only of the actual building, but more importantly, of the actual inventory, which will be a locator along 173. So it's kind of a balancing act between commerce and landscaping. And we look forward to working with the applicant's architect, landscape architect on providing a appropriate landscape plan. With respect to sidewalks, there is a proposed new sidewalk along the frontage of this new dealership all along Route 173, which is again, consistent with the existing sidewalk in front of the Menards slash Walmart master plan, PUD. We also will request along Brown Road, which has technically not been designed yet, but that either a bike trail or a new sidewalk be incorporated along the improved Brown Road. I think that sidewalk pedestrian, pedestrian connection will be important to provide wherever develops the north, north of this dealership on to provide actually either a vehicle, I'm sorry, pedestrian or slash bike access to the area. So we are requesting one stipulation, it's been added to the staff report, is to have the applicant work with staff on the final design of Brown Road, would incorporate a sidewalk connection or potentially a bike path trail. With respect to the forward plan, there is a photometric plan in your packet. The applicant has submitted a photometric plan for the overall site. The staff has actually provided, had an opportunity to review that photometric plan. We reviewed it. Now, the generally, the photometric plan complies with the village's ordinance with one exception. There's a slight, the area along Route 173 has illumination that's slightly higher than the half-foot candle that's allowed. I think that's appropriate. As you well know, the contemporary trends for all dealerships, they have a little more illumination along their main arteries. Again, to provide visibility of the inventory, not only for security, but also for commerce. So staff is generally higher, it's basically the foot candles are still below, well below one along 173. But staff is generally comfortable with overall, overall variation of the village's photometric requirements for the one area along 173. Other areas generally do comply with the village's photometric standards to the, to the east, to the north and to the, and to the west. So obviously, there'll be potentially, potentially mixed-use residential areas to the north. And the general photometric areas along the future access drive to this overall site to the north will generally have a lower photometric plan. We're generally comfortable with that. With regards to trash enclosures, the applicant has submitted a trash enclosure plan that does comply with the village's requirements. And with regards to that, we are also requesting that any type of trash enclosure and also mechanicals, the mechanicals on the building to all be painted in, in, in the earth tone color that will meet, match or blend in with the existing EFIS on this proposed new building. Now, with regards to stormwater. As you can see, there are two large retention ponds. And north of that, those detention ponds will be a new access drive, which will provide direct access to a future development on the marketplace property to the, to the west. So with regards to that, there are two large retention ponds. Our village engineer will have an opportunity to review the preliminary engineering, those retentions. But this overall stormwater management will be serviced on the subject site. It will not be a regional pond per se, for this overall development. The actual retention facilities will be serviced for this onsite itself. You can see that the proposed two retention areas, they are located just north of the proposed dealership itself. So with that, staff is making favorable recommendations this evening of this proposed site plan with six stipulations as outlined in my staff report. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have. And the applicant and their engineer are all here this evening to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrigan. Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Brown Road, is that, is that village property where that road, where Brown Road is or going to be?
So currently, there's enough right-of-way on the, the, the overall Brown LLC property, provides sufficient right-of-way for 66-foot. On right away. So the, so currently, as I've said, Brown Road is a prescriptive easement, is not technically village owned right of way. So the applicant will work, and not only this applicant, Mr. Scarpelli, but more importantly, the overall developer of this property emerges out of Oakbrook. Will work with staff to have a dedication of the necessary property to make the necessary improvements. Of a 66 foot slash three lane profile for Brown Road. So to answer your question directly, there is sufficient. Property to have the property dedicated for a future right of way, future improvements for Brown Road.
Is what happens to the existing brown, so-called Brown Road, which is.
That will be incorporated within, it'll be incorporated into the new Brown Road. And then obviously staff as part of the overall. Master plan development of the Brown LLC property. I wish you had a, a, a easy name, but that's what we refer to it. We will have to work with, as you know, there are some residents, single family homes to the north, northeast. Which have direct access on the existing Brown Road. We will work with those property owners based on current law. We have to provide access. So we'll provide access to those property owners. So those property owners will have access off the new Brown Road. Now the exact configuration where the excess, exact access points will be, those have not been determined. Because we, there's been no proposal yet for the northern, the area north of the site.
Okay, so, okay, piece I'm still fuzzy about is the current Brown Road. Is that, is that village property or is that township?
That's just, no, it's private, it's prescriptive easement.
Okay, so that, okay, so the existing Brown Road is private property?
Well, the existing, that's correct, private property. There's a prescriptive easement on it, but.
Okay, so.
But it's private property.
So the new, so the new access road is going to use that easement to use that.
Private property, that private property will be dedicated to the village of Antioch. To allow us to work with the applicants to make an improvement to a three, basically a 66 foot right, right of way. And that will be a public road.
This came up a number of months ago when they're looking at the property next to Menards and that all got discussed. I was fuzzy about that.
We don't need those properties tactically to make these improvements to Brown Road. We would need those properties to work with those property owners to provide access to, to extend the cross access. Where Menards is, all the way to Brown Road. That's something we may have to consider in the future, but we do not need. Those parcels to construct Brown Road.
Okay, so you're just going to use the existing easement that you have plus additional space off the Brown LLC property?
Correct.
For the road?
Correct.
Okay, now, also on the, on the west side of the property, if you go back to the, to the site plan, the overall site plan you had at the beginning. Yeah, okay. So there's a, looks like on the west side, there's access in and, in and out of the.
There's a right in and right out.
What's that?
There's a right in and right out.
Okay, so.
Sir, there's a full access point, access point. Can I point to the map?
Yeah, go ahead. Yep.
Right, full access there.
Yep.
Small probability will not be taken by possibility, but small probability either Brown Road or maybe Silver Lake.
Okay.
So did I have sufficient warrant? Full access, there'll be access drive, front access and Brown Road into the site.
Yep.
Additional access, additional access road located north of the, of the stormwater supply. So technically the asset will have 33 points of access off Brown Road, also to the right, the right out. Two access points on Brown Road, access point right, right out on 173.
Okay, where is Lincoln Avenue on, in comparison to on this? It's further, is that further to the west? Okay, so that's Lincoln? Okay. Okay, okay, so it is, okay, so it's not across from that Lincoln, okay. Okay, and then where does the water out of the retention ponds go? Sorry, the water out of the retention ponds, where does that drain to?
That there'll be a release, basically, they'll, there'll be a, not something that the preliminary engineers reviewing, there will be a, I guess, restrictor regards to release. That's been reviewed by the village engineer right now.
Okay, so is that going to go into, there's a lake there to the north of the property?
I don't know if that's been predetermined. I would defer to the boat, the engineer, that's probably more of an engineering question. So the engineer is actually here, that might be an appropriate question to discuss.
Okay.
Okay, sir, if you could come to the podium and say your name and then be sworn in.
Chris Perry with Wolfert.
Mr. Perry, you promised to tell the truth at this hearing this evening?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Yes, as far as the stormwater goes, there's a portion of the property that today drains towards the I dot right of way.
Yep.
So we're reducing down and restricting how much we let go towards the I dot right of way.
Yep.
The rest of it drains to the north into these two ponds.
Okay.
But the outlet for that is going to go through the developer's property. To what will be a future large scale master plan detention in the north side of the remaining property.
Okay. So, okay, so the water now is, that's, that's going to go into the Illinois road right of way. Does that go into the ponds and enter the ponds all the way out to the road or is it, is where does that water, how does it get collected and drained?
Small portion right in here, it drains towards I dot right, we're restricting that down to these spaces.
Okay.
The rest of this, the parking lot.
Okay.
We hold back, the outlet is here and it goes north into the developer's property. Typically, it'll be restricted to the developer's property, and when they come in to do their master plan, this detention will connect to the area.
Okay, so we have any, when, what's the timeframe for the developer's master plan and his pond and ethical win?
With exact timing, we don't know. I mean, obviously, we're working, we've been working closely with the overall developer's property. Obviously, they've been working with Mr. Scarpelli. The overall development will be coming in at some later point for what we call a PUD plan or development for the overall development. So I can't tell you the exact timing. It obviously will be some of the, what depending on the uses, finding appropriate users, commercial users for the property. I know there, there are some discussions about doing some of the improvements excavation concurrent with Mr. Scarpelli's project, so I suspect. If not this autumn, maybe in spring, we'll see the overall PUD for this overall project.
Okay, so the timeframe then for this job to be complete. And the drainage to be put into place, is that time dependent upon the master developer getting his, his done?
Well, I'm going to.
No, okay, so then.
Water for the Kia is all planned for, is part of the Kia project.
Yep.
So they're controlling all their own drainage.
Yep.
It's just the future connection. We've got a temporary situation now, but the future connection will be to larger ponds.
Okay, so right now, is you're going to, is your retention pond standing enough to hold? All water or is it some of it's going to be let go into another area?
Yep, the, the stormwater ponds that you see here have been designed for Lake County standards. It's going to hold all the water from the Kia development and it outlets it very slowly.
Yeah.
And then that goes to the north and it'll go off to the, where it goes today, which is draining to the part north of those lakes.
Okay, so then it's going to go, and it's going to drain from those ponds, your retention ponds into the lake. For right now.
Well, it's going to go, yeah, it's going to go through a lot of property before it gets there, but correct.
Okay. Yep. Yep. Okay, so you're going to discharge on that property at a single point?
A single point.
Yep.
On the temporary settlement, I secure, which will take care of that water for the overall property. In the future, this back feed, all of this back feed will be the storm water management for the rest of the health.
Okay, I just. Is that? Does that, Mike, does that conform then to appropriate standards then to just discharge that at a single point off onto this developer's property?
I mean, yes, the applicant, the applicants will comply with the Lake County Stormwater Ordinance. I mean, obviously, as part of the final engineering of this project, we'll work with Mr. Perry and make sure that everything complies with. Not only our ordinance, but as you know, we're basically an agent, Lake County Stormwater Management, so that will comply with all.
I just know it gets tricky when it, when you switch over and say, okay, I'm going to go from. Sheet drainage of the property to collecting and discharging at a single point. Sometimes that becomes a point of contention when you start collecting water and discharging at a single point. Instead of just letting it naturally run, the natural pool of water across property, that's one set of rules. And then when you start to collect it and discharge it, that becomes another set of rules. And I'm just. I'm just concerned about that, that that's been thought about and it's not going to cause an issue. The proposed. That legally, that lawyer, I may ask our lawyer about that. When you start collecting water at a single point. And discharge in a circle point is completely set of rules, then when you just let the natural drainage of the land go across the sheet drainage.
I mean, I'll defer to Lake County in their requirements. That in order for this project to move forward, it just needs to comply with the Lake County requirements.
There, obviously, I'll defer to Mr. Perry, but there, there, as you know, there's a final engineering stipulation. So obviously, the final, we're not at final engineering stages yet. We're very, very preliminary. So obviously, once this gets to the process, then we'll work with the applicant and the engineer. And also the master develop, which is the same engineer, which basically provides, you know, a benefit. Of coordinating all the stormwater management for not only is the proposed applicant site, but over, overall. Development. So our village engineer, Mr. Kime, along with HR Green, will work closely with Mr. Scarpelli. And the master developer to make sure all the stormwater aspects are compliant with all applicable ordinances. That, is that an answer?
Well, I, I, okay.
We don't have the final engineering done yet.
Okay. Okay, I guess that's good enough for now. Okay, I have no more questions.
Okay, Ms. San Filippo?
Um, so, not to beat a dead horse, but the stormwater then is eventually going and draining into Silver Lake.
Wouldn't.
Just so we're, you know, being clear, right? I mean, that's the lake we're talking about, correct?
Well, I think on a very temporary basis, I'll allow Mr. The Engineer again.
Ultimately, that's where everything goes to the silver light. So when the future detention bases are built for the large scale developments, those again will be designed for Lake County standards. So that the discharge points will be designed properly, so that we're not having any impacts downstream. The, the detention that we have right now for the Kia project has been reviewed by the developer. The discussions between the developer and, you know, the Kia dealership, as far as how they're getting the water across the property, that's all part of the agreements that they're working on together. Access, utilities, stormwater, they're working hand in hand to make sure that all those issues are addressed between. The first phase of the project, first tenant in the project and the overall master.
Okay, Michael, do you know, is that, is that lake managed by any kind of, you know. Management company or I mean, you know, like I'm on Lake Antioch, I live on Lake Antioch, there's a Friends of Lake Antioch.
I don't know, I don't know.
I know there's residences on the lake, so I was just curious.
I don't know if that's being, if there's a master association, as you know, the area, it's a north of the lake, it's unincorporated.
Right.
There's this one small area that's incorporated to the south of the lake. I don't know if there's a master plan association for that area. I can, I can find out, but that's just.
I was just curious if there would be any impact on the lake. Obviously, there's, you know, residents on the lake and, you know, I know, living on a lake, another lake in Antioch, I mean, we're very concerned about what's going into our lake. And that it's being properly managed and, you know, I don't know if it has anything to do with the Illinois DNR or, you know, who's managing that. So I was curious about that. Um, then also like looking at the north elevation, is that the back of like the service area? Is that right? Okay, and so there are no, like, no windows at all, right? And that's like two story? Is that, is that typical for like a service?
Can you state your name, please? Mr. Scarpelli, uh, you promised to tell the truth at the hearing this evening?
You.
Thank you.
Okay, so the, the back end, the north access is.
Right.
Mentioned, maybe we'll bring it up. So the, the back of the building is going to have some service doors. And typically, it's just the, the structure of the material, either brick or concrete tip of walls. That's typically where the service department is. We bring in IQ trucks, we put cars and trucks on lifts to service them, so they need. It needs to be higher than the height of the showroom.
Yeah. And so I think I saw there is like buffering, right, on that back, significant buffering landscaping, Michael, is that right? Could we talk a little bit more about what's going back there? Because that's a big expansive wall with, you know, no windows or anything.
So obviously, again, this, this wall elevation will be facing the back parking lot.
Right.
I think will store mostly inventory. And then you can see there's an extensive area near retention pond, there's extensive, extensive buffering landscaping. So there's going to be different levels, layers of.
And it's like trees, trees that are going in there? I'm sorry, I'm just looking for that.
Well, not around the retention ponds, but you can see.
But along the back of that north side.
Back of the building. And the actual building itself is what they call Coventry Gray. Which is the Kia motif, if you will. So it, it's aesthetically pleasing. I've seen the new look of these buildings. It's not a concrete, you know, slab, raw, it's, it's painted, it, it will blend in nicely. It's a nice looking building, the whole exterior of the building will be that.
Okay, and then I was just curious what the plans are for the Kia dealership that's existing right now, Mr. Scarpelli. So if you could, just because it's our job sitting up here to see how, you know, not only the new, but what's happening with the old site.
Sure, in, in that case, we haven't, do not have it all fleshed out yet. You know, if, if we make any changes, of course, we'll come to the board. We're going to retain the property. It will be automobile based in some way or another. You know, opportunities for car washes, other sales and service centers, possibly another dealership, possibly. We just don't have those fleshed out yet.
Okay, that's all I had for now. Thank you.
Ms. San Filippo, I do know that there, the residents of Silver Lake, Little Silver Lake. Are very active and very concerned about their water.
Yeah, so I just, you know.
No, it's a good question.
Commissioner to, to ask.
Absolutely. No, it's a good question and I know that they will be concerned. Just as Antioch Lakes. I have people that, I actually was putting a house on the market there. There is an association.
Yeah.
Mr. McCary?
The proposed property that Mr. Scarpelli, you're, you're going to be working with for the Kia dealership. Is that an outlot purchase that's, that you're managing, running and keeping for yourself?
The new property?
Yes.
Uh, yes, it'll be purchased for our use.
So it's the first property to the first phase of anything that'll happen for the total in concept?
Correct.
Okay, from the back of your property to Little Silver Lake. Do we have a distance on that by anybody at this time? I know it's quite a distance. I don't have the plan on my, bad. Yep. Right there. So you're probably about. Two football fields away from being approximately. Almost an entire Menards and its back area away from Little Silver Lake. Got it. Thank you. So the buffer zone, we have plenty of space yet to be developed for that in the future. The backside doesn't have doors on it, has just a blank wall. So your, your lighting there is minimized? So at this time.
Obviously, there'll be some lighting standards for the inventory.
At this time, right? So you're going to come with some parking along the backside of the building, which I saw on the plan. And then you have parking beyond that towards the backside of the lot. Do we have standards along that section? And then those are within our standard for off.
And then those are um, within our standard for off.
Yes, the photometrics obviously have been reviewed, all the standards comply with the villages, uh, ninety degree incorporations. You can't see obviously light source, they're all L E D, so um, I think there'll be a major difference between this new proposed site than. Some of the existing dealerships that we have that reflect that older technology.
Except for you did mention that there was a little encroachment out on one seventy three with the light.
Yes, there was a slight, again, substantially lower than existing lighting standards that we have right now with our existing dealerships. But there's a slight variation, just again for provide some visibility and also security.
All of our access to this property at this time until we gain access off of one seventy three on the west side of this property is gonna be off of Brown Road.
And also the right in and right out.
So right in and right out at the middle of the property.
Right.
And then the future access to the west side of the property will be for future development?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's subject to I dot's approval.
The only thing that I saw that was in a, a subject issue for me was three to one on grade uh, to the east of Brown Road. It's more like. One and a half to one or two.
Come at the grade there, there is a engineering, he can answer, I'm sorry, Mr. Perry can answer that. There are some grade issues there, though, we worked out, and that's where we're working with those property owners to the east.
Okay, so we're gonna be working with the property owners to the east to help mitigate that grade, so that it's not quite so steep and having so much runoff. It'll be good for you, Mr. Scarpelli, because people coming in during the winter time, when it drains down, it'll turn to ice, it's gonna be a nightmare. And then we have to maintain it as the Village of Antioch, so whatever we can do to help um, lessen that slope. Much appreciated, that'd be very helpful. Um, otherwise, it looks like a, a very nice step forward for. The uh, first development on. This larger property, what was it, uh, Antioch Marketplace or? Yeah. Twelve years ago? Wait, fifteen, oh fifteen, when we first introduced it. The, the two hundred and ninety-three pages of the uh, um, traffic study.
Yes.
A little light reading. The, well, it was very interesting to go through it all. Um. It's uh, figured on thousand square foot of uh, gross uh, floor area for, for this facility. Based on its calculations at, from what I remember. Um, maybe. Twenty-seven average uh, passes per day. Per one thousand square feet times twenty-four, twenty-four thousand square feet, approximately, it's always overkill. It's done to make us aware of what the absolute worst fricking conditions could be. Um, six hundred and forty-eight approximate in my mind uh, vehicles per day in and out. In and out, so it's three hundred and twenty-four in, three hundred and twenty-four out approximately. All day. Um, all right. The rest of the site, everything was on there, I didn't see, I do see it here, but I didn't see it in what was presented to me earlier, sent to the house. Uh, was the senior living, the uh, multifamily living and all the other living spaces to the back end, I didn't get those.
Well, again, that's just very, very conceptual, so what we did not want to do is submit a master plan that would just cloud up the discussion here this evening. That's very, very conceptual, as you know, the developer's responsible submitting some concepts, I dot, the worst case scenario, so.
And you did mention a light possibly at.
Yes, potentially, there could be a full signal at Lincoln.
At Lincoln, okay.
But again, it has to be, has to be a warrants, I mean, obviously, a dealership is not gonna justify a light.
Got it.
Um, it had to be a master plan development, had to, had the warrants and, and I mean theoretically, there could be a, there could be a signal, signal could be at Brown. And but there'll, there'll probably not be two signals.
I would doubt. Um, and then um, to make all of us comfortable, S M C regulates all of our water. Any water that comes onto a property from the sky or anywhere else and exits the property in any one direction is controlled by S M C. Whatever we have to bring into our property and contain and hold and release at a single point, gets done based on their approval. When you're near the water, like we're talking about here, and right now, we're two football fields away, so it's gotta filter through all of that before it ever gets to. Um, Little Silver Lake, S M C is going to hold us to a very strict standard. Are you going to have um, triple basins for um, grease and otherwise coming off all your parking lots? Uh, anything water wise from your service centers? Anything that could possibly be for hosing and or cleaning, going through a triple basin, making sure that all oil contaminants and nothing else can go anywhere else.
Everything from the building side. Very many grease straps, triple bases. For the detention which handles basically the main parking lot, for Lake County, we have water detention and we have water quality that we have to meet.
Yes.
The criteria that we have to take care of before any water to leave the property.
Water quality has to be maintained based on um, customer grease, parking, uh, gas leaking, oil, whatever else can come off of. So it has to go through a series of plant based. Um, and, and or material based products to allow it to release from there to the cus- to the uh, adjacent properties and or the lake. Just so we, we know what they put us through to get that quality taken care of. Um, otherwise, I, I, I think it's a, it's a very nice plan, it's clean. I like the look. Um, initially, just off of Brown and then the right in, right out in front, it's gonna be a little tough, but otherwise, um, it's a good foot forward.
Okay, Ms. Carstensen.
Yeah, I think just to continue Mr. McCarty's thought, more landscaping, right? That's why we keep talking about it, to help with the stormwater, I think you guys did a good job, staff did a good job. Continue to plant the grasses so that the junk doesn't end up in the lake. Um, how much do you anticipate this to increase sales?
Well, uh, initially, we're our first year there about twenty percent. And from there on up, uh, you know, it's kind of a, in, in that world, it's earn and turn, the more you sell, the more you earn. So our plan is to uh, go there and sell twenty percent more, we're in the mid uh, seven hundreds. Uh, new Kia's on a yearly basis, so um, you know, it's gonna be uh, quite an expense, so we need to be able to justify that too, so. We're uh, swinging for the fences.
Thank you. Um, only other comment I have is, Michael, again, thank you to staff for the bike paths.
Yeah, no, obviously, our plan is to have extensive bike paths all along within, within this master plan development. As you know, there's a new bike path along Deep Lake Road, um, so there's all, all kinds of opportunities in this area for pedestrian and bike path connection.
Ms. Madigan.
Um, so I just, just a couple of questions, so what is the, your completion timeframe for the Kia dealership? Um, obviously, once approvals and all that are done.
It's um, up in the air a little bit, obviously, we need to go through some phases. Of course, this being the, the first and main one, uh, our next um, milestone will be I dot. And either getting a verbal, if I'm stepping on a line, tell me, uh, to get a verbal or a written approval, we hope to have that by November, end of year. Uh, we are simultaneously uh, bidding the project uh, with different developers. Uh, we'll hopefully be able to award that here towards the end of the year. Um, but we hope to be able, I know it's one explanation, but hope to be able to start digging March, April.
Okay. All right, and then, Michael, this is more of a question for you probably, but um, I know Grim Road is in the plan for the village in the future, right? To reopen.
Correct.
Um, so then you're gonna have Lincoln and you're gonna have Grim and with increased traffic flow and as everybody knows, our wonderful trains. Um, I don't know if I missed it, I don't know that I saw any commentary about the train in the, did I miss it or did I?
There's some in there from the.
Oh, traffic study, yes.
Um, but as of right now, even with that portion of the quarter not developed into anything, traffic gets pretty backed up down on one seventy-three. So that's my only concern is um, the traffic there, but also if we then without a light.
Well, obviously, you know, as you know, or you don't, you know, I dots, we're currently working on plans for the widening of one seventy-three, so there, as part of this ancillary. There may be some ancillary improvements that will have to be made as part of the overall development uh, for improvements on one seventy-three. You can already see that in front of Walmart, Menards, um, so there's an overall plan, phase one for improvements, widening of one seventy-three. Um, there will probably be a plan is to have a signal light, signal, signal station at the new um, Grim Road, well, there'll be a new name for Grim Road, but what is currently Grim Road. Um, there'll be a signalization at one seventy-three and potentially signalization at Lincoln. So those signalizations will help the overall traffic pattern along with the widening of one seventy-three.
No, I, I think it's a great concept, I think it looks great, I think it'll be good for our community and who knows, you might do so well there, you decide to move everything in the back half and out. That's all I have, thanks.
Well, I have.
I have another question.
Okay, go ahead.
This is kind of ancillary, but. I'm assuming that the layout of the, of your facility, a lot of that comes from Kia itself on showroom space and mechanical space, all that. I'm just curious again about. The lack of windows in the service area with. You know, you're gonna have quite a few mechanics in there working with lack of daylight windows, and that's always been an interesting part in manufacturing buildings and things like that, where. You say, well, I got people working and that productivity seems to increase if you give people natural light in the buildings. But yet, I look at the Kia thing and they're saying, now, we're not gonna worry about natural light for all the mechanics working, you know, basically like that. Now, just as, I mean, has this ever come up with, ain't discussed with Kia about, about that? Did they, they saw you, they tell you, I'm just interested in what Kia has to say about that.
Uh, they have not, um, if I could go on over there, I could tell you a couple of things here. There is nothing current.
Yeah.
There are big overhead doors here and here of the glass overhead door.
Yeah.
You're gonna get the metal right there, you're also gonna get the metal right here that is a service drive through, these are glass doors.
Yeah.
While it's not directly wrapped around and uh, through here. Yeah, um, there's a hallway through here, there are some areas where there's.
Yeah.
But for the service center and stuff.
Yeah. So I, I just wondered, you know. From Kia's perspective, with you, I'm like, you know, you may or may not know anything, but I'm just, this is kind of ancillary to this whole discussion, but that's always a part about curiosity and manufacturing buildings and daylight into the buildings and things like that and.
It'll be.
Do you have it, not have it, you know, and I don't see a Kia, doesn't seem to be big on that.
It'll be uh, lit up, of course, efficiently to be able to see what they're working on.
Yeah.
Painted white inside.
Yeah.
Rafters are, are white, it's a warehouse type.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I just.
You have something?
Been around a lot of manufacturing buildings and that, I just have philosophy of different companies and how they have windows, no windows, things like that, the, the workers and stuff. I'm just curious, since I had you here, I could ask you, that's all.
Okay, Mr. McCarty, you signaled?
Same, same uh, note, um, the uh, north side of that building being the service area, having no windows, there's also. An added benefit to Little Silver Lake, if the windows are there, up high, down low, whatever, and you have the service area lit up and they're there after eight. Or to nine, they will be affected by more light intrusion towards their area. So to have no windows on that side keeps your light in uh, infiltration going out past this property inside its building. I noticed that and I'm kind of very happy to see that there was nothing there.
Okay, I'm just curious about the Kia's philosophy, that's all.
Okay, any other comments? All right, and um, since I have nothing more to say on this, I think it looks great, I'm excited to, to see a new uh. Uh, new one coming into town, I think it's wonderful, and uh, with that, I would like to have a motion.
A, a motion would be appropriate to recommend approval of the site plan for the Kia dealership to be located at the northwestern corner of Brown Road. And Route one seventy-three, subject to the following stipulations. Compliance with the requirements of the village engineer, compliance with the requirements of the Antioch Fire Protection District. That a sidewalk or bike path be incorporated along Brown Road. That any mechanicals on the building be painted the same color as the building. That the trash enclosure be painted a color that will match the proposed building. And that the applicant work with staff on the appropriate landscape islands to be relocated to the site to provide more area for inventory. So move.
A second. Brian?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, and if I could have a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.